The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Rule has been taken?
Yeah, I hear it is.
Okay, so next up goes to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the February 12th, 2019 minutes, if I do a meeting. Motion supporter, any comments or questions? Hearing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion is carried. Moving down to hearings, we have to set a hearing for the, set a public hearing for Tuesday, March 26th at 6:00 PM to review and consider submission of a Michigan Department of Natural Resources, Michigan Natural Resources Trust grant application for the replacement and rehab of park restrooms located in Wright Riverside and Pine River slash Conservation Park. Recommendation is to set the hearing. Got motion supporter, any comments or questions? Eric, do you have any color on this one? This is the same, basically the same brand as we submitted before.
Yep, we'll be talking about the presentation here.
Okay.
Later on the afternoon. Agenda, yes, yep.
Alright then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, move to set the hearing. Moving down to agreements, first up is consideration of a resolution adopting a five-year software support and maintenance agreement with Frontier Communications of America for a total cost of $25,154.66.
Move approval.
Motion supporter, any comments or questions? Hearing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay. Reports, can we receive, I guess we have one, code enforcement report for January of 2019.
Move to receive.
Okay, good motion. And support, any comments or questions? The man here doing a question.
It's the same name.
Yeah, it truly it is, I mean it's, you're doing good work for us, we do appreciate that, so, yes. Oh, we didn't amend the agenda, did we? Okay, let's complete this one first then. So we did have a motion supportively, so those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? And then with your permission, we'd like to amend the agenda for a report from our finance committee. I guess a motion to amend the agenda first would probably be.
Support.
Motion support, any comments or questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion is carried, okay. Now Roxanne, would you like to give a share?
At our last meeting, the commission appointed a subcommittee to review the policies and processes in the City of Elmo's Finance Department. Matt, Greg, Nick and I have met twice to review the current financial operations in light of our recent audit. We will continue working to address the audit findings with the goal of strengthening our internal systems to then move towards a more robust analytical projection framework.
Okay, any comments or questions? No questions, okay. Move receipt then, or we will entertain a motion for receipt. Pardon? Any motion?
Support.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion is carried. Appointments, consideration of appointment of Heather Theron, is that, did I pronounce that correctly? I'm sorry Heather. To the Elmo Planning Commission to fulfill the unexpired term of Ryan Pellerito, which is ending May 1st, 2021. The term isn't ending that way. We've already ended. As far as I know, he's still healthy.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and support, any comments or questions? She's here, so, again, we can pick on these people. Hearing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion is carried, welcome Heather. Thank you for volunteering. And I would like to add a comment, we had several people volunteer for the position and it was a difficult choice, we had several very qualified, very willing, able-bodied people, it was a tough choice and I'm sure Heather's gonna do a nice job for us, so, again, welcome. Moving down to new business, we have receipt of a presentation on the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, Michigan Natural Resources Trust grant application for replacement and rehab park restrooms located in Wright Riverside and Pine River Conservation Parks.
You had some questions about that, so we'll just kind of go over that real quick. This also helps us with getting some, you know, some public comments and getting the application out there in the public. This is the same request we made last year at this time. We are still looking at, so, the restrooms that we mentioned in Wright, this is the Wright Park restroom, Pine River and Riverside Park. Our last park meeting, we went over the scoring that the State of Michigan does for those applications and looked for places where we could increase our score and we'll talk about that a little bit, where we think that the opportunities are for us. Restrooms aren't necessarily the top priority on the state's list. There's other, restrooms are, they're their priorities, but they're not the top priorities, so we don't get all the points for the restrooms, but we came really close and we think with some of these tweaks that we'll talk about, we should get in at least the top 30. Again, our number one priority is Wright Park with the work that the Build the Dream Park did this last summer. We still have some work to do here in the spring. Once everything thaws and dries, we get the walking path around the lighting. This is an important piece of the overall park. This facility will be replaced by a four-stall, independently locking, universally designed restroom, very much like the one that we have over at Charles Avenue. And I'll get to that one in a little bit. We estimate the cost for those four units to be $200,000. And so, so far, so good with what we have over Charles Avenue. We are able to provide hand dryers and paper for the toilets. So everything, we have been able to provide that, that system's been working, so we're hoping to break that this year. This map kind of shows the utilities that are out there in the facility. The red lines are the electrical connecting the two van shelters that are out there. We're looking at upgrading those because if you do have more than a hot plate and a crock pot, it pops the, pops the breakers in the building back here. So those will be upgraded as part of that. The blue is the water and the brown, obviously that's the sanitary sewer. And the green is the storm sewer. Obviously, this is now gone and it's been replaced by the new place structure. So the new facility will come a little bit to the south here and make those adjustments there. This is kind of an outline of the facility out at Charles Avenue. We haven't gone out and asked engineers, architects to draw up any designs yet. Obviously, there's no sense having those dollars spent now because they're not reimbursable. Once you approve, it means the initial approval from the state that you can ask the engineers to draw something up and those dollars that the engineers spend are reimbursable under the grant. So if we spent money now to do design work, those would be completely on us. But typically, that's what the designs will look like for the new restroom, but a larger, larger scale. That's the facility out on Charles Avenue next to the rail trail. It contains two universal single occupancy restrooms. We hope that as possible. Like I mentioned, we have hand dryers and toilet paper provided there. And also, they are self-locking doors, they're on a timer. That has been a, it's been an issue this last year for some reason. We hope to get the bugs worked out of that, but the idea is, right now, we have a seasonal coming in the morning to unlock everything and then a seasonal has to come back in the evening to lock everything up. With the timer, we don't have to pay that individual to come in and do that. But yeah, this year for some reason, we had some more issues with the door on the left than the one on the right, but don't know why. It'll work just fine for a few days and then we'll have a glitch in it. This restroom cost us $90,000 at that time to build that. That includes the parking lot or anything at that point. And at that point, we had Senator Khan appropriation due to Elmo College and that helped, so that did pay for everything there. This is the other facility that we're looking at rehabbing. This is the restroom at Pine River Conservation Park, it's shared by those two areas. This is our number two priority. It's a fairly large facility and it does service a very large area. It's a lot larger than even Wright Park. Currently, there's two toilets and two sinks in the men's room that work. And in the women's room, there is four toilets and two sinks that work. What we're looking at doing, the door down here is where we have a station, a lift station for our wastewater treatment plant. So we'll be using some wastewater funds to help with the renovation of the building itself and then ask for $50,000 from the State of Michigan through the recreational to refurbish those facilities into five single occupancy, universal design restrooms. This is currently kind of what the layout looks like in there right now. Not so handicapped accessible. And that's what we would have once the design is built. You'll have two coming off where they can, people park right now, there'd be three there. And then around the edge, we have enough room to stick two units coming in from the Riverside. So with that large of a park, I think we got a good number of units there to provide for that. Our third priority is Riverside Park. Currently, working wise, there's facilities there to add something, but the vandalism and things that happened over the years, what we have right now is one men's working toilet, one urinal, one sink. And the women's side, there's one toilet, one sink. What we would do, since it's a smaller park and to try to save on the dollars, we look at refurbishing this. So just doing a complete overhaul of it, each one is be a single occupancy in each side and that's kind of what we have right now, would be $45,000. And that seems to be working, we don't get a lot of complaints on what's available there. It's more about not having paper available and privacy. That's kind of what that would look like, just two doors in, self-locking. There by yourself or you take your kids in, so you have privacy, people meal chairs, their caregiver can be in there with them. There's enough room to do all that.
Eric, are there changing tables in these restrooms?
Yes, we will be adding those in there, yes. Where we look at, so where we can score some more points, under what they call renovation and that's what we have there, just 20 more points that we could get. Basically, we have to find some documentation showing, this is supposed to be tough, showing when we built these things. So probably what we'll have to have is some kind of affidavit saying that as far back as this, we know they're there based upon aerials and this sort of thing. So we'll probably have to do some kind of affidavit to show that they are more than 40 years old. And most of them are. Even Riverside Park was renovated, some small things were done to it in 91, 92. And they do allow for renovation as long as the renovation is older than 20. So we just have to, we'll probably have to do something like that because I doubt we can find any building prevents. We did last time. Use environmental friendly features, that are 20 points we can get. We added $6,000 to what we did last time to add some plantings, some perennials and that sort of thing around those facilities and some LED lighting on the outside, which we didn't have there originally, but we'll put up a couple of lights just to get us those extra points. And then, this was an easy one, provide a better plan to them, getting the word out about the universal design restrooms. I guess we talked a little bit about Facebook and our website, but I guess we need to reach out to Commissioner Agin, you know, the Pine Avenue place over on Pine Avenue and just having some kind of dialogue with them and put it in a small, into the plan in the application, let them know that's how we're going to get the information out about the universally designed bathrooms. So there's 20, 40, 60 extra points. And the only other one that we could find that we could get some extra points on would be to increase our match from the 35% to the 40%, that would give us 20, 10 more points. And that would give us a total score of 630. And based on this last year's scoring, that would put us in the top 30 in the whole state. So I think that would put us in a really good opportunity to get the grants. But that's increasing our match by 40% and that's, this is what that'll look like. Total construction cost of the restroom is $301,000, that's adding that $6,000 that we mentioned. Engineering, they put in 50% for that, so that would jump up to $45,150. So the total construction cost with the engineering, $346,150. Asking, jumping that up because we were at 60, yeah, we did 65 last year that we were asking for work from the State of Michigan. And this, we're asking.
75.
75, I'm sorry, 75. So we dropped it obviously to 70 by going with increasing our match. So we'd be asking for $240,305. The remaining 30, these come from local government, so it's $103,000, $840, 85, 45. Yes, this is where I want, I'm sorry, that's what we did last year. This next year, to get to that extra 10 points, the city would need to match that 40, which would come from general funds, so that bumps us from that $103 to $138. The grand amount requested from the state would be 60%, which would be down to $207,690. So that's the difference in costs for us. Instead of last year, you know, if we kind of fell along those lines, our match, if we did that, that's what we could do still. We could put in a match, but 30%, that gets us those 20 points. That's $103,000, just go over that for our match at that level. But if we were to bump it to 40, our match would go up to the $138,460. But that gets us extra four points, that gets us 30 points for that particular category. And that gets us least in this year's scoring in that top 30.
How many projects were funded?
Yeah, there was 50 funded last year. Maximum request was $300,000. So you're talking, you know, 35,000, you know, basically, you know, an increase. And that's something we don't have to decide tonight, that's just something to, you know, to put out there to get that extra 10 points. Move us up that ladder.
Are there more points available if we move to another 5% or is this?
No, that's, that's, that's maximums out. Yep, that's maximums out is what we would get here.
Our 40% match maxes out those points.
Yep, because we are in the bottom, one-third of household median coming from the State of Michigan. So we bumped to the third category and we're all the way in the bottom for it to be maximum out if we bump to 40%. You could bump it higher, but it's not going to give you any points.
It wasn't the number of points, it was the number of points.
But those, you know, like I said, we don't make that decision tonight. But that's kind of an option to get us an extra 10. And maybe those top ones, you know, a lot of, there's two in Saginaw, there was two in the Lansing area. So those projects were funded, those were, you know, more up there, they're aligned of what they'd like to see from access is what they're after, especially water and into natural areas. So they love trails right now, access to water, opening up areas that hadn't been open to the public before are their priorities at this point. But we were encouraged again to apply and see if we can increase our score and.
So is that what you meant when you said the restrooms weren't their top priority? The access, public access points to natural resources are their top priorities?
Yes, but these are on the list of things they'll fund, but they're not the top priority. So if there's a bunch of projects that year that provide that access, then those are going to get some extra points that we can't even qualify for.
So how do we write this that provides access to our natural?
We really did, well, we did try to, we did try to write it that way. And, you know, we, even the Girl Scouts wrote a support letter, David Graf, who's been helping out, you know, with volunteering, or helped write a letter, saying that, you know, stating that these restrooms are accessory uses basically to support the rail trail, the river walk that we've actually connected now right there at Riverside Park. So those were all in the.
Boat launch, did you think that?
Yeah, boat, yeah, that stuff's all right there. So we had that in the application last time, but they didn't buy that. At least last, at least last year, but they, like I said, they had some other ones that were just right in there, you know, that these meet our criteria.
But you didn't even this year.
Stretching, yeah.
Does the marketing plan, was that seen as non-existent in the last one?
They decided they wanted more than what we had in there.
One thing you might want to do is maybe notify the Mysterio Committee and some of the caregivers. Let's say we're going to send letters to those folks so they all know. So you would have, not only the general public, but people who might specifically work with those populations.
Very good idea.
The R E S D has worked with the population too, they're probably qualified.
Special education, high school, things like that. So you might, you might target them with just a letter informing them that that would be part of your plans. And we've done this, we've also targeted them, we think they might be more useful.
No, that's a very good idea. It sounds like there's one more.
Yeah, that gives a real specificity.
You set the public hearing here for the 26th and the application is due April 1st.
Then it's another year.
Well, they'll review it and they'll contact us again saying, here's your, here's your preliminary scores. Is there anything else you want to do or? But in our case, we can't get more points if we added more fund, you know, fund balance match to it. There's no more points to be gotten there. So I don't know what else we could do this time around to make ourselves look more.
Desirable.
Desirable, yeah, for them, so.
Just question, what if we just ask for funding for Wright Park?
That, you know, when I was looking at those numbers.
Do we have more of a chance?
Well, underneath that portion of the scoring system, it did seem like we scored terribly with that.
Because I think that's the most important thing. Guys worked really hard getting that new playscape down there and we don't have restrooms for the kids when they come to play. I just hate the city even put off till 2020.
And that's when it would, either early speaking, probably would build, would be fall of 20.
And what are the major concerns with the facility down in Wright Park? It's functioning?
It's functioning, yes, it's functioning.
So we do have a restroom there.
Yes.
What are the major complaints with that particular facility?
It's paper and privacy. It's dark. It's not handicap accessible, it's not handicap accessible, we, yeah.
Okay, what's the issue with handicap accessible, there's stalls in there, correct?
Yeah.
So if you were to take those two bathrooms, convert it into two, just two, just no stalls, take the stalls. If you opened it all up, you'd have handicap access, I believe, right?
You'd probably have enough room.
The door was.
But I'd be able to take some measurements.
Well, you'd probably have to put new doors in. The doors aren't much good, but, so put new doors in, presumably they're wide enough. Get it down to just one toilet, one sink, a hand dryer. Is that a feasible plan for that stopgap at least?
Yeah, we can do some, David, we can do some measurements and see what we have over there. Maybe, you know, just cover for the year hand towel. It probably, I don't know what they cost to put in a hand dryer, but to cover the hand towel for the season.
There's electricity in the building issue.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, I just, just how much you'd want, want to spend. But no, that, that will get us through a summer.
And just boost it up, paint it and do a thing which we could actually use with the marketing too. That would be that idea that is this stopgap for now and this is what we're working on for the future. They do some of that too, the marketing portion.
Can we go back to that?
I just think we ought to the people to put all the effort into that, at least.
I don't think anybody's arguing here.
No, 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 no.
We'd all like to see that, we were all hoping that this was gonna.
Thanks for your work ethic, Eric.
No, I appreciate the committee, we can walk through it all and you're about an hour walking through everything. So hopefully this time around, but I hate to leave the money on the table, you know, because we can get money to do these things that typically would come on the general fund. We can use those general fund dollars maybe to fund something else.
Lots of need for a dollar, there's no question.
So if we can get these paid for as much as we can by the state. Anyway, we'll talk about the kind of same kind of thing on the 26th.
Thank you, Eric. I guess anyone else got questions for Eric while we're here? Okay. I'd like to square one here. Yeah, I guess appropriations is next up, so entertain a motion, please bills.
Support.
Motion support, any comments or questions? Hearing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion is carried. Commissioner comments. Roxanne, just please.
Going to the high school band concert right after this, if anyone wants to go listen to the high school always play music.
I see the new uniforms.
Yes, the uniforms for this fun.
Or did they get their goal, they reached it? Congratulations.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Cool. All right, Larry.
So more binder clipping and safety pin in them.
Well, I'm not sure that ever is. Roger, you already spoke on a turn, so.
I didn't know I did. I'm sorry. I just wanted to say what a real treat it was last Wednesday to go through the water plants and the sewage treatment plant. The stuff that I had no idea. And it gives me a little bit better view and ability to deal with things when they talk about changes that we want to make to those facilities and what those facilities mean when you go through it. The people who led the tours first did really good jobs of explaining it to idiots like me, you know, how all this stuff works and it was very, very enlightening.
Michelle?
Congratulations to all our students that are going on to state or districts, all the sportings, but also congratulations, I wanted to talk about one, maybe having a Panther Day in our city just for all students that are involved in sports or activities, just for being a Panther. I'd like us to talk about just having a day for all the kids, just to be excited about being a Panther. So it doesn't exclude anybody, if they're a student at Elmo's Schools, then it's a Panther Day just for them. So I would like to work on the act for any city to be behind it so that we can get our kids involved and just be thankful that they're in our school system and that type of thing. And that's about it.
Mr. Trump?
Well, congratulations on the high school wrestling team, second regional championship in a row. Those two times that I'm aware of that they made it to the final eight in Kalamazoo. Supposed to be better next year, if I understand.
I have nothing.
All right, well, I would certainly go on there to hear about that. I think there's a play on still out of Australian?
One more week.
One more week?
It's a really, really good show, really good show.
So I think Friday night, which you throw at concessions will be extra good.
I think I'm the mayor with a vibe up.
So forward to that, again, congratulations to the schools, all the kids. Thanks to the staff, thanks to Heather for volunteering and everybody else that applied for those positions. We certainly appreciate that, so. With that, we'll open it up to public comments. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the commission? Please step to the podium, give your name and address and then share your comments. I would like to be first, Laurie?
This past Sunday, my name is Laurie Wollstone, I live in St. Louis, 517. Last, what was it, Sunday? Yeah. One of our firefighters from St. Louis retired after 42 years of being on the fire department and we want to give prayer to Don Saliday from St. Louis. He was a very special firefighter from the start of 42 years. And there was a lot of people there, there was Elmo, I believe, Ethica, St. Louis. We had a good time talking about memories of different firefighters being on the. We had a good time talking about memories of different firefighters being on the force. One of the pictures that I have on my phone was my uncle. And I am proud of my uncle of being a twenty-five veteran, twenty-five-year veteran on the Michigan Fire Department. Prayed for Ron Soliday and his family to do good and try to have Ron Soliday relax now after being on the fire department for forty-two years. Ron is a very dedicated, hard-working firefighter. And I dedicate that all the fire departments of St. Louis, Elmo, Ethica, and Breckenridge are well-working firefighters, even though if you're retired or not, you're always a firefighter in my heart. And I commend every firefighter in every community and city workers of doing their job. I left here the last meeting and I went out, I was on my way home and I helped one of the sisters. She was stuck in the snowman. Of me being a good Samaritan and a nice firefighter, but I helped push out the sister and I went down on my knee twice. Very luckily, I didn't break a bone in my knee. But these guys, they do a well job done. I don't care if it's in Saginaw or what. Today, Saginaw lost three children in a trailer house fire. And the three people that was in with the fire are in current condition. I want to pray for that family in Saginaw. But these guys do a well job done. I, you know, I commend everybody for a well job done on any part of the community. You know, I grew up around this community, I give my heart out to the people that work so hard. And people that don't care about our workers, they don't care about the firefighters or the ambulance, the rescue, I do. I've been around these guys long enough, I've been around these guys ever since I was this small. I know what it is to have an uncle and have a firefighter do their job. They do it well. And I want to congratulate everybody that helps in our community. Because if it wasn't for these firefighters and police officers, we wouldn't have a place to live. And I thank you for everybody and thank you for myself being here today because I've been through a lot and all the prayers that came. I'm doing a very good job of being a healthy person now. But these firefighters and police officers need more support than what they get. They do a job, people don't care about them. And if you're out there on a rescue run, you can see what they're doing day after day, seven days a week. You know, they're hard workers. And if you don't care, then you don't need to be around. I do care. I grew up around these guys and they do a fantastic job. Thank you.
Chuck Murphy, eight twenty-three Pine and also the new county commissioner for the area. I want to thank for the board for tagging along on the water and the sewer tour. We're blessed with some outstanding people right on those facilities, boy, they're really impressive. And related with that, you know, Elmo Precinct Two and then also Pine River and Seville Township. Seville has an issue there in Riverdale with the septic in the sewer system. And I can't make any official requests, that would have to come from them. But you might want to start looking at maybe a request coming to run something into the sewer system and maybe it could help everybody. I know Representative Lauer, I spoke to, and State Senator Altman, and they're interested in helping, you know, making sure the problem's resolved. Maybe it could help out with some money needed for the sewer facility there, you know. Just hoping you can maybe start looking at that. I can't make any official requests, but that comes with the bill.
Probably inappropriate for us to make too many moves without being asked. You know, we certainly pride ourselves on cooperating with our neighbors and being as helpful as we can with our neighbors.
Right.
You know, I believe our project with St. Louis with the water has been a great demonstration of that. Our staff really pulled together to work with St. Louis and, you know, for the benefit of everybody. So certainly, if we are approached, I'm sure we will give it all serious and due consideration to help the neighbors to the west.
And it could probably help everybody out in the process, hopefully.
Is there a wastewater facility in Riverdale?
No.
No, that's a problem.
Yes, it's a problem.
But it's also a lot farther away than St. Louis.
Yes, I don't know that it'd even be feasible.
Yeah, I don't either. That's up for engineers to figure those things out, don't they, Dave?
Thank you.
Who would like to be next? Okay, it looks like everybody has spoken. But that will entertain a motion to go to the band concert. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Very, thank you very much, Henry, evening. See you all in a couple of weeks, if not before.